11:20, our item is the 6.5, our 11:00 AM. Consideration of an Ordinance Adding Article 73 to Chapter 21 of the Lake Zoning Ordinance to Address Commercial Cannabis Permitting Activities in Enforcement. And with that, I will give the floor to Director Darby, and she can go from there. Hello, Director Darby.
Thank you so much. Is this on? It is? Okay. All right. So, my name is Director Darby with the Community Development Department, and sorry, I'm just used to saying that. And so today, I am here before you to introduce an article that we're proposing to add to Chapter 21 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance on the commercial cannabis ordinance. And I would like to start off, before we actually go into our presentation, I'd like to do a couple of things. One is, I would like to introduce my staff, because this is definitely a joint effort. So I want to give them the opportunity to introduce themselves, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I will start off with Andrew.
Hi, I'm Andrew Amalong. I am the Cannabis Program Manager.
My name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager for the Code Enforcement Division.
Good morning. My name is Bill Collins, Chief Building Official.
And I'm Jamie Henry. I'm the cannabis technician for CDD.
And we have a couple of other staff members that are not here today because of family emergencies, so we're missing Michael McGinnis, and we're also missing Mary Claybon. So we will have some fill-ins for them. So, thank you. So I would like to start off by saying that this has been a huge task, and we have been through the existing ordinance as well as the proposed revised ordinance. And the way that we came up with our revisions of what you see, what we're proposing currently, is based on recommendations or inputs that we've been receiving overall from all stakeholders, or issues that we've had to address in the department overall. So as we went through the ordinance, we tried to highlight issues that we received, whether or not it dealt with water usage, if it dealt with fire, if it dealt with drought management, scenic combining. So whatever those issues were, we tried to address it, and to conduct the appropriate research, and then analyze it, and then make the best use effort that we could with what we had working for our staff. But as I went through this, I realized how overwhelming it is for me only being here for seven months, and that maybe adequately, we have not addressed all issues that we need to ask, have addressed. Therefore, I am going to start off by requesting that the Board of Supervisors request another or approve another pathway for us to review the ordinance, whether that be a task force or some other pathway in which we all can work collectively to review the ordinance. But our presentation today is going to highlight a lot of the issues that we have been receiving through our department, and as we move forward, it's also going to have recommendations that we have. But knowing that this is a draft, number one, of the ordinance, and there are, I would predict, other drafts, ordinances that will be coming forward. Okay? Having said that, I will move forward. Okay, so our presentation outline is what issues are we addressing, what have we done, and what are we proposing to do, what actions are we taking, and where we're going, and then our next steps. In order to categorize all the issues that we had, so we went through and we put all of our issues in the ordinance, and they were just based on sections, and we put the topics in there, but we didn't really have it organized in a way that we can present it to you where you could really understand what we did and where we're going. So we divided the ordinance up, or the presentation up, into three categories. So we looked at land use and zoning, the environment, and also the community as a whole. So, again, just to reiterate, what we did to derive at our draft recommendations is that we reviewed and analyzed commercial cannabis ordinances from other jurisdictions. We reviewed regulations from the Department of Cannabis Control, the Water Board, the Fish and Wildlife, et cetera. We outlined and discussed many topics of concern with internal stakeholders, because at that time, we were not allowed to provide an outside, external draft of the ordinance because we did not have the direction from the board. We conducted a comparative analysis between the existing ordinance as well as the proposed ordinance, and we had, we held meetings with the CDD Committee at that time, before it was dissolved, also a county council and administration. So why are we proposing to add a new article to Chapter 21 of the County Zoning Ordinance? Basically, it was disorganized, and we were proposing to make it more user-friendly, easier to read, and more comprehensive. And to do that, that's how we came up with our categories. So we looked at land use and zoning, the environment, as well as the community as a So in terms of land use and zoning, some of the things that we've done to the ordinance is that we've updated, oops, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to switch this over.
Okay. So in the previous ordinance, or the current upholding one, in Article 27, there were definitions that may not have provided more, the most clarity, and so not only did we add definitions of words that maybe weren't in it before to this current draft, but also we provided clarity in those definitions to help not only CDD explain those to the public, our applicants, our permittees, but it also was better understanding for us. As far as, further than that, our permit application requirements, we have adjusted those and made checklists that actually provide better clarity, again, to explain exactly what an applicant needs when they're applying for that. So when they get the application, the application itself doesn't state every single item that they need, so now we have developed checklists that actually explain exactly what items that they will need to include with that application when they put it, when they deliver it to us. In addition to that, we have updated the master fee schedule and actually increased the fees of our application to better adjust to the hours that are put into these cannabis projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And the next thing we did, we looked at zoning districts and allowable uses, and the use permit parcel requirements. So in the ordinance, you will see that we've actually either deleted or added zoning districts that we thought would be the best use for that particular parcel. So we got a lot of calls about setbacks and buffers from residential districts. So we've actually removed some districts, like C1, which is some of the areas of the code for commercial cannabis, and we've actually deleted other and added some. So you'll see that as you go along as well. Setback requirements, we've actually increased some of our setback requirements, and this was only based on the calls that we were receiving in the, from, in CDD. But we also looked at our zoning ordinance and the definitions of what actually defines a zoning classification, so what does C1 mean or C2 mean? And we looked at those, and we also looked at the development standards for those particular zoning districts, and we made recommendations. We also, in addition to that, not only did we look at our code, but we looked at what other jurisdictions we're doing, although I understand we are very unique here in what we do and what we need to propose, but also we wanted to get an idea of what other counties and municipalities were doing. We added a section to the ordinance that dealt with incomplete and abandoned applications, and the reason for doing that is because we have, as you probably know, approximately 135 pending applications that are in CDD now, waiting to be moved forward or processed. Some of the applicants, we are unable to contact, they are not responsive, and so we have like this log that's just sitting there, and we're unable to move forward. So we would like to add in our ordinance something that says that when an application is incomplete or abandoned, we would like to put a timeframe in which we can move forward. And I believe that that timeframe was 90 days for incomplete or abandoned applications. Modifications, amendments, and change of name and ownership has also been major issues since I've been here. So I will start off with change of name and ownership. So I understand that previously, there was a process in which you can change your name if you owned a cannabis cultivation form, that you can change your name with an application that we had. I didn't know that when I got here, so I gave people a little pushback. But now that I have discovered that there is a form that we can do that, you can actually change your name if you own the property, and someone else wants to purchase that property, they are allowed to be able to do that, provided that they do meet all other criteria in terms of live scans and the other processes that they would have to follow. That would be the same thing in regards to ownership as well, if you wanted to sell your property. Modifications and amendments, and I will be very honest with you, I've gone over this, over this, over this, over this. With modifications and amendments, and I've been told that Section 60.33 is how we handle actual modifying or amending a project. So from my experience of being here, we have use permit applications, and an applicant comes in and they want to change the scope. And in order to change the scope of a project, they would have to, based on Section 60.33, they would have to apply for a new use permit project because they have changed the scope of their project, and they would have to go through the exact same process in which they had their original project approved. I get a lot of pushback from applicants in this particular case. County Council have been excellent with explaining to me how this process works, and what's required, and how it actually should move forward. But in my brain, I can't seem to understand that if you're, if you've been approved for a use permit, and then you're coming back to amend it, how that would impact the team. So I think in that kind of regards, that's where our task force would come in, or other pathway that maybe the board could recommend, that we can kind of look at that and analyze it a little bit more, but that is the existing regulations, and county council have interpreted it correctly for me. I'm just trying to process it in my own mind. And that was also, will deal with amendments. The temporary use permits for cannabis events is a new item that's been really requested by the community, and we have added a process in which you can obtain a temporary use permit for cannabis events. The other issue that we've, we've been facing is insurance and bond requirements. Not the actual requirements, but the issue we've been facing is actually illegal dumping, or someone who has a property, they decide they no longer want to grow, and they just leave their property the way it is, and then Code Enforcement has to go out and actually clean it up. And it costs the city or county a lot of money. So we thought that if we added some type of requirements as insurance, in terms of a bond of some type, then if the cannabis industry would leave, or the illegal growers would leave, not illegal, leave their property, then at least we would have bond money upfront to be able to go and clean up that particular site. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Amalong, and he's going to go over some of the environmental issues we have been addressing.
Yes, as you can see, we have a handful of environmental issues that we're facing, and at the top of the list would be hydrology and drought management. This has been a very, I guess, a very important issue to face as we've been experiencing extreme droughts. And as we know, in Ordinance 3106, we do require hydrology reports and drought management plans for all use permit, or for all use permits and their applications. But we, what we've been experiencing is that the reports and the plans that we are receiving just are simply not robust enough. We do require that they provide their water use, water availability, and cumulative impacts within the hydrology reports. However, especially in that last one, when it comes to cumulative impacts, or impacts, there, you know, it lacks a clear path to find those, and we could benefit from some improved guidance on that end. The same goes for the drought management plans. While we require them, we don't have any clear guidelines as to what they should include. So within the draft ordinance, and again, we're just really scratching the surface here, we hope to get a lot more comments and feedback to kind of build upon what we have, but we do have an outline to improve that process. Moving on, another issue has been aesthetics and the scenic combining district. This has been hard to address, mainly because scenic combining districts are applied differently in different community area plans. So years ago, I believe nearly two decades ago, when the existing scenic combining issues were addressed, they were created on the community area level, and those locations are not easily accessed by the public. There are some public channels online that they can find those districts, but it doesn't, you know, it's not clearly available. So some more guidance, guidance on how to approach the scenic combining districts can help, as well as some practical applications. We do have some internal procedures that will request visibility surveys when it applies to a particular project. However, we could, we could improve these procedures and potentially codify them. Moving on, tribal cultural resources has also been an issue. We're going to get into that a little more in the next slide when it comes to the community, but we definitely have some room for improvement with communication with our local tribes. And in terms of soil grading and erosion control, this has also been a problem with a handful of projects. A lot of it has been related to early activation, and our applicants not necessarily fully understanding what scope they can basically embark on when it comes to their early activation projects. And with that in mind, we do not have early activation in the proposed ordinance. Another aspect has been hazardous materials and how they're stored, and this, a lot of this comes from the general public, and, you know, many people concerned about cannabis projects coming up in their area, and what kind of pesticides and fertilizers are being used, and we would like to provide the public with more information and provide our applicants, you know, just a clear understanding, just to make sure they know what they can and can't do. A lot of that is addressed at the state level. Public lands and recreation has been an issue as well, as far as what proximity a project can be to public lands. Another issue that we're hearing about more is the fact that we do have a national monument here in the county, and how does cannabis, what's the relationship of cannabis with that national monument? So we're hoping to, you know, receive more comments and feedback from the public, from the cannabis industry, on public lands. Cumulative impacts, again, we're, this is, you know, we're at this point where this new industry is becoming established. So for the first time, we're really able to start collecting data and start having an idea of what the cumulative impacts are for nearly, well, we have 110 cannabis use permits approved. So, I mean, this is the first step in looking at what the overall impact will be of the cannabis cultivation and cannabis industry as a whole. Now, removal of trees is something that we, it's included, there's an outline on it, but this has been a highly contentious issue, and the direction that we're feeling is that we could potentially need an ordinance of its own to address tree removal. And finally, we get into security requirements and environmental impact reports. So far, of all of our 110 approved projects, we haven't had any that have undergone an environmental impact report. And basically, we do the initial studies, we go through a handful of checklists, and for each section, like aesthetics, you know, soils and erosion and geology, hazardous materials, for each of those, we try to come to one of a few conclusions. Either there's no impact to the environment, there's a less-than-significant impact to the environment, or there's a less-than-significant impact to the environment with mitigation measures in place. If they can meet any of those requirements, then they pretty much clear that section. If any one of those sections cannot clear those requirements, even with mitigation measures, we cannot guarantee that there is less-than-significant impact to the environment, then that should trigger an environmental impact report. We would like to see, in the new ordinance, clear guidelines on how we approach that. Few options have been establishing thresholds, but there is an issue with establishing new thresholds within the new ordinance, because they're hard to be backed, they cannot be backed up without a county-wide programmatic EIR. So until that is in place, it's hard to have clear guidelines where a project hits this size, and it uses up this much water, it would require the environmental impact report. So there's a few options on how we can approach this, and we hope to get more feedback and develop that in the final version of the ordinance. And Mary, do you want to take the community?
Talk about community reviews.
Oh, right. Let me go back, especially, okay, yes, the hydrology report, that's another thing. As we are receiving hydrology reports, and the same goes for biological assessments and archaeological assessments, we do not currently have a hydrologist as part of county staff, or, I think more specifically, for the needs of cannabis, since it's mostly groundwater, we could benefit from having a county-designated hydrogeologist. And without that staff level of review, we're receiving these reports that are created by hydrologists, civil engineers, and hydrogeologists, but they are hired and paid for by the applicants. So obviously, there's a conflict of interest that could exist with the current method. So hopefully, we can get that addressed in the new ordinance as well. And anything else? So, finally, we get to the community. The first item on this list would be tribal notification and consultation. According to AB 52, Assembly Bill 52, we are required to send out notification to all of the local tribes. However, our communication paths could, there's definitely room for improvement. We're, and with, another factor in that is just with the high turnover of staff, it's the avenues to receive requests for consultation could have potentially gotten lost in a former planner's inbox, or, you know, some other method of communication. So we really hope to improve the communication with our tribes. Exclusion zones and prohibited locations need to be, I guess, expanded upon and more clearly defined. We already have some existing exclusion zones, as you know. Some of the exclusion zones that are listed on the online portal are not actually applicable with the current ordinance. They predate that to Article 72. And there's been a lot of recommendations for new exclusion zones, such as within, you know, HOAs and POAs. So there's some new ideas, we would like to hear from the public more, you know, where they want cannabis activities and where they do not want that, and to have those clearly defined. And then we get on to, well, Mary, go ahead, this kind of is where we transition into code, so.
Okay, and so then we go on to issues that we have regarding odor, and in our current ordinance, it states that an applicant shall prepare an odor response program that includes, but not limited to, designating an individual who is responsible for responding to odor complaints within 24 hours per day, seven days a week, including holidays. It also states that providing property owners and residents a property within a 1,000-foot radius of the cannabis facility, with the contact information of the individual responsible for responding to odor complaints, and that policies and procedures describing the actions to be taken when an odor complaint is received, including the training provided to the responsible party, on how to respond to an odor complaint. So there are policies currently that are in the ordinance, however, we are not enforcing those. And so that's something that we definitely would need to carry over to the new ordinance, the proposed new adding Article 73, but it would have to also require enforcement. We also have issues regarding NOAs that we get a lot of calls about, but the NOAs is mostly dealing with generators, and what those decibels R's are for the NOAs. So we have in CDD purchased new NOAs equipment, so we're able to go out with Code Enforcement and actually test the NOAs. The problem with this is that sometimes the NOAs is in the evening when we're not here, or on the weekend when we're not here, so those are things that we would need to address on how to properly attack that. But I do know from, I hate to be telling Code Enforcement's business, but I do know that Code Enforcement is going to start doing a round rotation of days, where they are going to be more on work on Saturdays or the weekends and after work. So we'll be able to implement a system that can improve. And I'm going to turn it over to Marcus.
Thank you very much. I don't think that's the first. All right. Yes. You got it. All right. So the enforcement section, it's really fortunate, because the board has already provided us with the mechanisms and tools to enforce these codes for cannabis. Section 1349 and 13, which deals with permitted cannabis operations, and 1350 addresses the unpermitted. So really, there's not much to be added here that's new. You're familiar with the ordinances, you approved and enacted the ordinances. So these are the tools that we will be using. There are penalties and mechanisms and measures in place to address violations. Also, Article, Chapter 21 of the Lake County Code, Article 60, allows us to revoke permits. And so there is, it is defined in the code what those terms are. So you have a gamut of options here. You have the revocation of a permit, you have fines, you have all the other tools provided by the code. And so going into 1349, part of those penalties are for first violation is $1,000, second violation, $3,000, third violation is a $5,000 penalty, and then there's also permit eligibility down the road.
If I may interrupt, that's a per day?
That would be, yes, per day. So those violations accumulate per day that the violation exists and is not corrected. Thank you. Next slide. And then 1350, this goes for those unpermitted cannabis operations. Most of this ordinance is geared towards permitted cannabis, but there may be situations where there may be unpermitted cannabis involved as well. And so the penalties for that are 1 to 10 plants, $100 per plant, 11 to 25, $200 per plant, 25 to 50, $300 per plant, and 51 or more, $500 per plant, plus you have the option of, plus there is the permit eligibility, and then also, there is the other mechanism for summary abatement in those instances where there are environmental issues.
And again, that's per day?
Yes, that is per day. Thank you. So at this time, they wanted me to provide some of the stats regarding some of the unpermitted grows. Legal inspections are scheduled to occur in July. That's when we'll go out there, do a full inspection check, there'll be a list, we'll partner with the Code Enforcement, I mean, the Cannabis Division, they'll be the lead on that, and then we'll be the enforcement arm in those situations. But as far as stats regarding unpermitted grows at this point, or unpermitted cannabis or cannabis in violation of the county code, at this, at this point, we've eradicated approximately over 5,000 plants. That's just based on voluntary eradication, we haven't actually started the abatement process. So that's people just doing what's right and complying. We have 83, more than 83-plus notices that have been posted to date, and 22 structures removed. Usually, when we attack a cannabis site, we go after the structures, those are the most easily seen, most noticeable, and then from there, we can move forward on that. These numbers are not current, as we're moving fast, and the numbers, each day, we have nine inspections scheduled today for unpermitted cannabis grows. Most of those are in the Blue Lakes, Upper Lakes region, one in, two in Spring Valley, and one in Kelseyville. So these numbers are increasing at a fast pace, and will continue to go up. So these are just our preliminary numbers, starting from March of this year to current.
And our next presenter will be William Collins.
Okay, so most of our stuff is going to be about accessibility that's required by the code, because along with fire issues and things like that, so if we have a fire out there, we can get a fire apparatus out to the site, we can get it put out, we can get people out and fire apparatus in. So to start off with, public accommodations and commercial facilities are required to comply with Chapter 11B, it's of the California Building Code, which specifies that people with disabilities can access them. Employee work areas are supposed to have an accessible route through there, because according to the ADA, you can't discriminate against hiring somebody that is in a wheelchair, so not necessarily are they going to, but they need to be, they need to be able to provide access in case somebody with disability can come in there and work. So some of the requirements for the accessibility are, you need a 36-inch-wide accessible route, which can be reduced to 32 inches for a maximum of two feet, and then it has to go back out to 36 inches for four feet minimum, and then you can reduce it again to two feet. Basically, it's so a wheelchair- Basically, it's so a wheelchair can get through there to get access. There's also, if it's over 200 feet, they need a pullout. So I don't know how long, how big these greenhouses are going to be, but we need, they need an access down the middle so somebody in a wheelchair can get down through there. That's what the code's asking for. And then, you know, a passing spot or pullout if it's going to be over 200 feet. Another thing is, is an accessible route needs to be provided to parking, if parking's provided, to all buildings on the site, so that somebody can get around there. If they're in a wheelchair working there, they can get from the, from the bathroom to the site where they're doing their work, that type of thing. They can also get to any of the other buildings that are on there that need to be accessible, such as the processing building. To get inside the doors and gates, there's a requirement that you have a maneuvering clearance at the door. It's a little bit wider. It needs to be level so somebody in a wheelchair can get around, open the door, maneuver theirself around to get inside without an issue of rolling down the hill, without an issue of not a flat surface there so they can move their wheelchair efficiently. When parking is provided, like I said before, if parking's provided, accessible parking needs to be there. It's required by code. There's a table that decides how much. Generally, if you have accessible parking, then the first one has to be a van-accessible space, and then every eight, eight accessible spots would be van-accessible. I doubt they're going to have that much parking that it would trigger two van-accessible spaces. It would probably just be, my opinion, probably just one accessible space they would end up needing. Okay, structures within WUWE areas, the Wildland Urban Interface Fire Areas must comply with Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, which is mostly talking about ignition-resistant construction. I have less concern about the hoop houses, things like that, the little greenhouses. The structures that they're using for the, the drying of the cannabis, for the processing of the cannabis, those types of things, you know, it's going to address vent opening size, it's going to address overhangs, make sure that if there's a fire down on the ground that it can't get the roof rafter tails that are hanging out on, on the side of the building caught on fire and then takes it inside the structure. Okay, 4290 and 4291. 4290 requires access for fire apparatus. Talks about commercial sites. If you have a road, you need two lanes 10-foot wide, so a total of 20-foot wide. If you have a one-way access, you need a 10-foot wide, and it's actually, you've got to have two feet on, a 10-foot wide road, but you actually need two feet on each side of it clear as well. It doesn't need to be roded, but it needs to be clear so that way the apparatus can drive down. And it also talks about weight, talks about the surface that needs to be prepared so they can get a fire truck in and out of there. And it also talks about a turnaround at the end and a radius. So basically, they can get these big fire trucks in there to eliminate a fire. You've got this big cannabis grow on fire back there. We need to get a truck back there so it doesn't turn into a wildfire. 4291 is mostly about vegetation around the site, keeping that cut down so that if something does happen to the structure, that it doesn't spread to the adjacent, wild areas and adjacent The electrical for the lighting, we have a lot of, I was out at a cannabis site the other day, they had a 4,000-amp service out there. Generally, a house has a 200-amp service, some big, some, you know, some houses will get a 400-amp, but it's rare. So, you know, in perspective, 4,000's a lot of power, you know, they're out there, they're running these big fans, they're running these heaters, air conditioners, they're running all these lighting systems. So we need to make sure that those are, per the California Electrical Code. The other consideration that I'm concerned about is boxes inside these greenhouses. If water can be splashed on it, it needs to be rated for a wet location. If they're high enough that we, in our determination, the water will not be able to get splashed on them, then it's going to be a damp location due to the humidity factor inside these grows. Okay, and this is one that I've been noticing too. We missed on one that I had been out, I was out on one of these cannabis processing facilities the other day. I went out there for final, got missed at plan review, but we need a restroom out there. The plumbing code requires, you know, a restroom, an accessible restroom. If it's going to be, if there's a restroom provided, it's got to be an accessible restroom. The plumbing code requires a restroom so these people can wash their hands, they can use the facilities, you know. We can't have people out there working without proper, proper toilet rooms. So basically, that's going to be figured by the table in the California Plumbing Code, and it's under an F1 occupancy for anybody, any of the, anybody that's doing the cannabis is curious about that. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, so now we'd like to cover where are we going, what have we done, and what actions are we taking? So currently, we've updated our internal procedures and processes for our cannabis program. So as you know, we have created the Cannabis Section Team, and they're doing a wonderful job in terms of prioritizing our projects and moving them forward. We've conducted research and, on cannabis overall, and updated our internal records and databases, and that's how we're actually creating our GIS maps today. We mapped out approved and pending projects. We've drafted, draft one of the revised cannabis ordinance addressing the issues that we have been receiving and that we've mentioned previously. And we've incorporated approved ordinances and resolutions into the staff's analysis as we made our recommendations. We have scheduled presentations, which one is today. We held another one February the 15th on the cannabis ordinance. And we are actually scheduling workshops, which will be, start tomorrow, and the May 25th and May 26th, make sure my dates are correct, from 4:30 to 6:30 here in the chambers. We did not include at this time Zoom sessions because this is our first draft ordinance. We wanted to be face-to-face with our customers so we can actually describe and interpret the code and our proposals with them. However, there would, there will be media team here on both days to film the event and broadcast it shortly thereafter. And I'll discuss what we propose to do at our next presentation and workshop. And here again, this is where I requested when I first started off, that the board help us with a pathway for including our public input and comments in order to determine or create a, an ordinance that is beneficial to the county as a whole, as well as to the industry and the general public. We've also implemented and adopted grant programs that are helping us with the cannabis ordinance, and Laco is our current consultant that is helping us move those projects forward.
So to date, I'm going to move this here, we currently have, as mentioned, 110 approved projects, and right now, roughly 135 pending projects. This slide right here gives you a glimpse at some of the new systems we have in place in terms of prioritizing projects, and essentially, as they fall into different stages. I was going to get into a much more detailed explanation of our updated procedures internally and how they apply to the current existing ordinance, and how a new ordinance could improve those projects, but it was part of a team effort, and since we're missing some key staff members today, I think we're going to follow up on that in our next presentation after we receive all of our comments, so I can expand upon that at that point. And again, part of that process, as Mary had mentioned, we've mapped out our projects, which roughly stand at 245 approved and pending permit applications for commercial cannabis. One of the factors to keep in mind, I think the next slide can give you a little bit better idea of what we're looking at in terms of approved and pending projects. These maps were currently based on our data in December. We've updated it, and we are continuing to update these, these maps and include them in a project-by-project basis as they move to Planning Commission. But, you know, going back to having a designated hydrogeologist or biologist or these specialty areas that we can work with in-house, we could then continue to do what we're doing, keeping this in-house. Another option is if it's going to be, we're going to continue to allow applicants to hire their own professionals, we need to provide a better avenue for those professionals to access our data through some form of online portal. There's, well, we'll leave it open to comments over the next few weeks. So there's, there's issues with both approaches, but this kind of gives you an idea of where we're headed to look at, you know, a more cumulative overall approach to cannabis cultivation.
Thank you, Andrew. So in terms of our workshops, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to conduct workshops starting tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 here in the chambers. After our workshops are completed, we will allow a three-week comment period. The, we are also creating a portal online that will, the customers can actually submit their comments online, and it will come directly to our cannabis team, and Jamie would be organizing and keeping up with those. We are proposing to provide comments and responses to every comment that we receive. You will receive a response by July 12th. We're proposing to come back before the Board of Supervisors with all of our comments and provide a response of what staff has provided. At that time, I would like to, at the July 12th meeting, we would like to make a presentation on our final recommendations for our early activation moratorium, and we'd like to actually, starting today, we're going to initiate community outreach with stakeholders, with the cannabis industry representatives, provided that the Board of Supervisors advance us or direct us to move forward, and with the tribal representatives, agencies, and stakeholders overall. We are proposing to hold a second round of workshops and a presentation in August. We're hoping that if the board directs us with the task force or another pathway, that we can work within the next couple of months and then come back with our facts and findings of what that task force is proposing. And we would like to give a final presentation before the board in October. So that would conclude our presentation for today on where we are on adding, proposing to add Article 73 to our zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work. This is a monumental project, and I know staff has spent a lot of time, a lot of thought putting this together, and I really appreciate it. I, I do think that there's a lot to discuss here. I think originally, we were the task last summer when we kind of decided to kind of go down this pathway, was to streamline the process that, you know, we've, we've had in place. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I, I, I think that we need to develop that task force soon, very soon, and rather than go through a comment and response period, I just, I'd like to see roundtable discussions with the industry, with staff, with the board, to kind of really dive into a lot of these topics that have been brought up. There's a lot of meat here to get through, and we do have that moratorium that we have to, to deal with in July. But that's my, that's how I think we should go forward, is, is, is jump in to, you know, get that task force developed soon, like maybe at our next meeting, have some action with that, and open up the conversation so we can have these face-to-face conversations, really get into that before we move very much further down the road with this ordinance.
Ms. Grant, did you have a statement?
I just wanted to say that this is a very large ordinance, and it's very ambitious. It is difficult to review and take that apart in a regular board meeting, which is one of the reasons why it lends itself to a task force approach, if your board would consider it. There are other avenues that you can do that. And some of the provisions are, I think, more discussion items rather than actual recommendations, so there's a great deal to break down. Some of it may be better off in its own separate ordinance. Some of it may be policy documents, et cetera. With regard to 60.33 and the Amendment of Permits, fixing that is relatively simple, and one of the ways would be if your board would agree that amendment needs to be defined. The existing language says, "Any permit pursuant to this chapter may be amended by granting a new permit of the same type and following the same procedure for adoption of the original, except as specifically provided in this chapter." That means all of Chapter 21. And then amendments to permits may include extensions of expiration periods as provided for in Section 60.10, and changes in uses, structures, and conditions previously approved. However, any change in conditions must be approved by the reviewing, review authority that originally adopted such conditions. I, I don't understand frankly why however is there because the first sentence says it has to be treated as a brand-new permit and go through the same process. But again, that is something that a better, or any definition of amendment in that section could accomplish. So there's a lot of housekeeping details, I think, that are going to be applicable, not just for cannabis, but across the board. You know, the zoning ordinance has evolved over many, many years, and just as with most jurisdictions, there's a lot of Band-Aid provisions that could be updated and addressed. I realize that's not the point of this, but when it comes to an amendment, the amendment provision for cannabis permits, it says, "Except as specifically provided for in this chapter." So without touching that section, you can make a provision that addresses amendments for cannabis. I just wanted you to be aware.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Oh, and I'm sorry, but with regard to the task force, your board could agree to do that by consensus today, but you couldn't take action until the next Tuesday because it's not on for an action item.
Thank you for that. Yes, and I just appreciate the, the report. Appreciate the work that was done with this. One of the strong things that I appreciate is having all of you here. I know, being part of the last process when this was initially done with Ordinance 3073 and all that, you know, a lot of folks put a lot of work and energy into that. It was new, it was, it was one of the prime subjects of, of the county at that time, and so a lot of work was put into it. And so I know with that, it's going to take what you stated as well, a collaborative committee. There's a lot of concerns, a lot of people feel they're not heard. I'm glad to hear a lot of things today coming out, like, you know, the workshops. I know that a lot of people want to see more workshops aside from just here, and also possibly in the community, so I'd like to entertain that as well. And before I go further, I know Supervisor Sabatier has his pen up, so I'll allow him to go ahead and say some things.
And just to finish up the conversation from Ms. Grant, maybe there's the possibility of amendment without expansion and amendment with expansion, where that can help us kind of better understand what the amendment is. I think there's ways to, to break down what exactly that we would be looking at.
Oh, well, yes, this provision is confusing.
At best.
I was being kind, but it's, it's not workable. And the whole point of any good ordinance is so the public can follow it readily.
Right, right. And, and the reason I said with or without expansion is because we've already done an environmental study of within the footprint, and we should be able to figure out if there's a, a need to enhance that environmental review versus if you're expanding, obviously, we need to do another environmental review based on the expansion you're looking at. So I just want to go quickly. I, I sent a, a long list to Director Darby. Appreciate you reading through that, and I just want to make it public as well. I think the formatting is, obviously, we need something better that can be read more in a linear fashion. I appreciate everything kind of being brought together into one chapter rather than being kind of spread out. So that is important as to why we're doing a revision. I appreciate the tree ordinance being there. I do agree that we want to look at a independent ordinance for that, so I'm hoping that's the direction we go, because it doesn't make sense to me that we do a tree ordinance for cannabis, but we're not doing a tree ordinance for other things that will also take trees down. And it's, it's not saying you can't take trees down. There's a, a pathway to saying what's acceptable and what's not, and I appreciate that. I'm not sure if that's perfect, but at least it's a good start to, to go from. The additions of the drought management plan, the tiered process that you're looking at, not sure if that's the right way to go or not, but it's the right step forward in enhancing that. I appreciate your words of concern of the hydrology reports, and I, I hope that we aim for that neutral analysis from somebody in-house, whether it's a consultant or somebody that we have hired. The addition of the event permits, it's been a lot of conversation that's been brought to me. It's a licensed type that has been available at the state, so I to me. It's a license type that has been available at the state, so I appreciate seeing that in there, and I think that just needs to be fleshed out. No more early activations, makes perfect sense to me at this point. And I love the addition of the incomplete abandon as well as the suspension revocation. Those parts weren't there before, and we need to make sure that we're not left in the gray as to, is this something we can do or is this something we can't do? But I, there's other parts of the previous ordinance that I also really like, that I want to make sure that we look at continuing, and that's the exclusion zone map, which included the farmland protection zone. There was a mention of it in the definitions, but it's, it's kind of, I, I felt like it was kind of lost other than when you look at the map. So I want to make sure that we, we still utilize a map. I think reviewing the map is absolutely crucial. We've learned so much from areas that maybe we didn't anticipate these things to happen, but they did. I also, I was reviewing the setbacks. There, I, I like the old setbacks personally, the 100-foot setback from the perimeter. I also like the 1,000-foot setbacks that we had from public lands. We had a definition of public land, which was if it's a destination for the public to go to, that they're invited to go to, trails, visitor centers, so on and so forth, that that's 1,000 foot. But we all know there's a lot of federal lands all around the county that there's no destination, and so that's why we created that category. And I'd love to see that. But I also know that we had a 200-foot setback from, I want to say, the off-site dwelling or something like that. I think that if it's your project, it's your project. If your house is right next to the site or not, I really don't care, but to your neighboring house, I'd love to see that expanded to like 1,000 feet to make sure that there's a good buffer between the next dwelling. I think that's important to make sure that we do that. I also saw in there that it said, "No retail where cultivation is." We had approved a micro-business where we allowed for retail. The idea behind that was for economic development of cannabis-friendly resorts, or kind of like a winery type, type of thing, a tasting room. And so I want to make sure that, to me, that's long-term economic development of cannabis, and I just want to make sure that that's in there. I, I agree that if you're growing, you know, if you're a farm only, and you don't have that other type of, of facility such as a resort, that, yeah, putting retail in the middle of an ag land is not exactly the right thing. I didn't see the one acre to every 20. I did see some other limitations, but I, I thought that that worked. I also saw that clustering, which basically you would take like five different parcels, put all the acreage together, and then be able to, because to me, that was an environmentally friendly way of doing it, to cluster everything in one area rather than having it everywhere. I didn't see that be transposed from the previous ordinance to this, and I think that was an important one for here. And I also didn't see the mention of water trucks. And I know that was in there previously, and it's an issue that we're being, we've been seeing through the drought, and so that's an important one for me. Just for things that I read through that I quickly will say I disagree with, the lottery approach. I think we need to use our environmental review approach to be able to say yes or no to projects, not a lottery approach. It was weird to me that C1 disappeared from the retail and that C3 was added. I'm, I'm concerned for those who might become nonconforming. There was also some other zone changes for cultivation and other things, and again, I'm, I'm concerned about the nonconformity. I think, uh, my personal opinion is that was too much change too quickly, especially after so many people have gotten their licenses. There was also your, it looked like, and maybe I misread, that it looks like you can connect to municipal water if you get approval from municipal water. And since this is ag, I'd like to continue it to be ag, and I just don't know, maybe, I don't know, but I don't know ag that connects to municipal water. Now, if it's your retail, or if it's your processing or manufacturing, I get that, but for ag, I, I would prefer that we, our, water purveyors are struggling enough to provide clean water. We just kind of had that conversation earlier, and I want to make sure that we don't add more burden for them to be able to filter and process the water to make sure that it's potable and that it's being used in that way. And I did see that there was a limited total canopy, if I'm correct, to five acres. And so this is one of the things that I didn't see in the ordinance was, in 2023, there's a new license type that's coming out. I think it's License Type 6, if I'm correct. That's for the 5+. It was supposed to wait till 2023, so that's, we can let our small farmers, our local farmers get in on the business early on, and by 2023, it was kind of the idea that corporations could come in and start doing stuff. I don't see that in there, and that simplifies life, because there's no more stacking of licenses. And so I think even just at least discussing that license type, I think, would be good. I did see a lot of state rules that were embedded still in this ordinance, and I think the easiest is to say we're following all state regulations, because they change. And if we put something and formalize it in text, then we're going to end up being contradictory if they change their rules. So I'd love to see then, maybe that makes it less than 46 pages. My personal opinion, there's no need for fingerprinting of employees. There's no need for extra security measures. I think just following state rules and laws and letting businesses make that decision for them. This is not 2018. This is not 2016 anymore. I think that we're in a completely different world and economics of cannabis where the attraction is just disappearing and dying that, that we continue to have those things. But there's two things that I found missing, and then I'll, I'll finish off real quick, is Supervisor Simon and I met with all the, maybe not all, but many of the fire chiefs for a while to discuss 4290, and there was a promise that we would come back with ag road standards. I want to make sure, number one, that we do not treat cannabis differently than traditional ag, and so asking them to have a beautifully asphalted road up to their cultivation is not correct, in my opinion, unless it's a facility, like if it's a processing plant, if it's a manufacturing, that makes perfect sense. But if it's ag, then it's ag. But I also agree that having an ag road standard is something that helps us make sure that we have a standard that we live by, that there is those safety standards that come along. And one of the examples that Chief Sapega gave us was that everybody has some sort of fertilizer or pesticide, and those things can be damaging to the employees that are there, and they need to be able to get in, especially while people are getting out, whether that's a fire scenario or a biohazard scenario. We need to make sure that that safety is there. And I think that an ag road standard is something that I feel like I made a promise to our fire chiefs that we have yet to accomplish, and I want to make sure that that's on our, on our pathway. Also, dry sheds. I think that's an important topic that I hope that we can resolve before the, soon, because people are going to be planting, and there's still not, I believe, a legal route for people to have either temporary shelters to dry or the, a permanent shelter, is that require a building permit or not, but it's still a conversation that has not been resolved that we need to resolve. I do know that we did pass, at this board level, to pass to the Planning Commission, who did approve it, but it never came back to the Board. Sorry if that's confusing. But we wanted to do setbacks for the state routes. And I think that fits right within the scenic combining district, and I would suggest that we maybe start from there with the task force reviewing what that was and seeing how that can be implemented similarly for the scenic combining district areas. I just have a quick question for Bill. The life safety standards, was that for hoop houses? Or was that for greenhouses, since greenhouses have to be engineered, so therefore would be structures? I just was curious. What, what is our way of seeing the differences?
I would think that the way you're talking about possibly changing it to a ag would considerably reduce a lot of the things that I discussed today, because it was a commercial property. If we're going to call it a commercial property, you know, the accessibility requirement's going to kick up. Obviously, that, it also has the 4290 stuff in there, and no matter what structure it's going to be, we need to make sure that it's not going to fall on somebody. You know, those hoop houses, I'm less concerned about, some, some tarp stuff or, you know, plastic on top, some, you know, plastic tubing up there. So if, if something like that falls down, it's not going to, you know, we're not going to have a big life safety issue. More of my concern about the structure would be like permanent places, like their drying facilities, things like that. And like I said, you know, if, if, if it's going to get converted to an ag, then a lot of that accessibility requirement's going to go away, because, you know, it's not, it's not applicable to an ag area. It would only be applicable to the drying facilities or the processing facilities, things like that. Another thing that I didn't put in there, too, is if, I don't know if in the county here, if we allow people to process to make like their oils and stuff like that, but if they are, you know, then that's going to turn into an H occupancy, and it's going to need a, a lot more requirements to, to meet that.
Yeah, anything out of growing a plant, I think, is a commercial activity, and therefore requires all those things to, to meet. I, I, I want to make sure that whatever we're asking our traditional ag to do, that we're asking the same thing when it comes to just simply outdoor cultivation, which under a hoop house, California state law is still an outdoor license. That's my opinion on, on doing that. So I just wanted to put at least in the public record all of those things. I think the task force is the way to go to hash all of this out. There's a lot here. So appreciate you bringing this to us and knowing that there's going to be a lot of change before it even comes back, before it's even final.
Thank you for all of those comments. I just, in terms of, and I agree with all that's been presented. The only question I have in terms of the workshops tomorrow and the following day, I don't know what that procedure would look like. Do we move forward or do we not?
I say yes. The more comments you get, the easier it is to build up the next iteration of this ordinance.
Supervisor Simon?
I'm in agreement also. We should go forward with those workshops. Obviously, more to come, and I am in favor of the task force also as we move forward, get the industry, get the folks together. So we said we'd commit to that, and, and I think we need to, obviously. And, and once again, I'll say it from the beginning, you know, we talked about five years for getting this thing implemented. There's still going to be stuff that needs to be worked on, but we've come a long way and we've learned a lot. So we'll try and work through that process, but I am both in favor of moving forward with the workshops that you currently have and expecting more coming along with that, the August, and moving for that. So in support of the task force also. So I'm in complete agreement with that.
Vice Chair Scott.
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to agree with the task force and the workshops. I just want to thank you for this presentation. It was very logical. I don't think we've ever really had this process with cannabis. It's always been, it seems like, chaotic, chaotic, and this was not. So just thank you and, and staff for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Supervisor Scott. And I, I just want to say again, we, we have the opportunity to do this really well, and other than the moratorium we have in July, we don't have time constraints. We can take the time that's necessary and work with everybody. We, we have so much experience here in the room, out there and here and up here, so I, I think we just leverage all of our experience and our resources and do it really well.
Sounds great.
Right. I, I'm in a, in agreement with the task force and, and working together with the, the stakeholders, you know, both, both mindsets, you know, the farmers that are actually doing it and the folks that are living in the communities that have POAs, HOAs, and all of that. I know that's a big, a big issue, especially in, in, in one of my town council areas, and the roadmap task force is the Spring Valley and Double Eagle Ranch. And so I know that their insight and input will be on there. I know there's a lot of illicit illegal grows going on in that area, and I think sometimes our constituency and our citizens focus on the actual license or applicants and, and kind of pinpointing all of the things that they're doing rather than focusing all of the illicit that's taking place, that's really doing the damage and making these smells and all of the other things. Neither here nor there. I just highlight that because it's, this is something they can actually grasp onto, so I really want to urge you to hear them. I represent both sides of the faction, and I have a lot of others that are not happy with it, and of course, those are on public record, as you see on there. But hopefully, they can come together, speak with you, you know, and understand that you're putting together something that can help move this forward and move this along. And so my, my encouragement is, everybody that's listening, you have insight, you have input. I know you've been blowing our phones up about it. Come to these meetings, come to them. Hopefully, we can also see if we can do one in some of the areas, like we, like we stated, aside from just being here. Would have been nice to see a Zoom. I'm not sure if that's still possible or not, but I understand, you know, your limitations on that. If, if there's not going to be an accessibility for that, let's see if we can do them. I know for sure one, they would like to see one probably at the Moose Lodge or in Clear Lake Oaks. So that's probably one definite area that will, that will desire that, a workshop there as well. But otherwise, I won't belabor it, because there's a lot of things I got notes on and I can go into, but I think those will be more prevalent for the actual task force and ad hoc, or whatever you want to call it. Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, as your Board's providing direction to staff, since it appears you have a consensus, very strong consensus for task force, do you want to give any direction to staff as to the composition of the task force, so that your Board feels that you're getting a good cross-section of the industry and everyone else who may be involved?
Supervisor Piska?
Yeah, I don't know how many seats for each category, but obviously, the industry and traditional ag and members of the community at large and staff. Anybody else?
Yeah, we actually, just this past week, started putting into place a system to track comments that come in for those people who cannot attend the workshops. We're receiving your emails, and we're categorizing them, if I remember correctly, into the general public, the cannabis industry, local tribes, industry experts, I believe, or researchers, and then, I think, consultants as well. So we could work out with that, and maybe you have some basis to develop a task force. We do not have traditional agriculture comments separated into a separate section, but that's, that could be.
I think it would be helpful to have someone from traditional ag.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Grant?
I, I just wanted to clarify. When your Board brings this back for action on June 7th, your suggestions now, staff can certainly look at, but ultimately, your Board will decide the composition of the task force you create and, and the number. But if you have recommendations now, so staff can get to work on it and begin the process, that might move things along.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just real quick on that subject matter, there's so much here. There's retail, there's cultivation, there's processing, there's event, that may be different groups to focus on different parts, because there's no really a need for ag to be involved in the retail conversation. But they're definitely involved in the cultivation conversation, so I think that maybe having some dynamic flexibility on, on who's involved in what conversation, if that's, if you're able to scatter the conversation in different parts on different days.
Absolutely.
Just putting the idea out there. There's still the state that's also changing their ordinance as well. I think that will have an impact as well. I'm, I'm going to ask a favor to the public. Change is always a little nerve-wracking and anxiety-building, especially if you're seeing something that doesn't quite fit in the project you're trying to move forward, or it doesn't quite fit in the project you may have already been approved for, especially since we're not, these are not permanent use permits, they're 10-year use permits. And so there's a lot of anxiety out there. I've received a lot of phone calls. Please be as constructive as possible, knowing that this is a work in progress. This is not a permanent stamp in concrete that this is how it's going to end. This is going to morph into something eventually that comes back as a final product. So please be patient with the process, be constructive with the process, and make sure you express yourself throughout that process as well.
That sounds great. I think that your comments are greatly received. My recommendation would be for us to have discussions that kind of mirrors our presentation. So we took the categories, the three categories, line use and zoning, the environment, and the community. So if we can have like different parties or stakeholders within those three categories, I think that that will be a smoother, more comprehensive moving forward. So that way, when we come back and present to you, you can remember that those were the categories, and those were the issues we're actually addressing for those particular areas.
Supervisor Simon, then Supervisor Piska.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You know, obviously, for the industry, we've, we've had it established here, and obviously, we have the Lake County Cannabis, you know, Association. So we want to make sure they, they get that spot at the table, too, you know. So I know the task force will have, you know, county, like some of the suggestions, you know, Farm Bureau, LCCA, you know, from, from that organization. So making sure they're at the table as we move forward with that process is very important. So. So, you know, when we established this and was able to vote on it back in 2018, you know, there was a lot to be learned. We have industry standards that are, you know, being applied right now with our permitted grows that are here in the county. And we know there are folks that are doing everything they can to help us establish it in a positive way. So make sure they have that at the table. Not everybody's going to get everything, we've said that from the beginning. But having that industry information out there is critical. You know, I haven't been through the total process as a supervisor. Plan on this year, hopefully going and see some of the final processing and everything that's happening. So understanding the industry as it's developed. So just very important that we get that done. So I'm in complete favor of that.
And then the moratorium that we have out there hanging, I think we'll need a recommendation on how to move forward with that too.
Yes, so my recommendation is to come before you on July the 12th with the presentation on that and our final recommendations.
The final recommendations for this new ordinance?
No, no.
Okay, for that one. Okay, great, okay, great. So that'll give us a little bit more flexibility?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
So with that...
I was asking, I believe it expires the 15th of July and...
Yes, it does.
With that, I will open it up for the public because I know a lot of folks came to talk about this. So...
I'm sorry, may I ask one other question? In terms of composition for the task force, how many members are we looking to include or is it unlimited?
Unlimited is dangerous and never-ending. I would offer seven, no more, but that's just me.
But with that understanding that public can be there, so it's not going to be limited to those seven, public can join the conversation and have their voices heard even though they may not be part of that task force, right?
Okay, duly noted. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarification. So your direction to staff is then to bring back at the next board meeting on June 7th? Exactly what? The recommendations for composition of a task force and how that will work with their goals? And then your board can formally approve and start taking applications?
I just want to make comment on that one too. You know, I know the number seven was set, but I want to make sure, obviously, that we have everyone at the table there. So it might be nine, it might be seven, but make sure it's a comprehensive recommendation, if you could. And obviously odd number always helps out too when you're moving through the process of trying to find consensus. So yeah, open to that, but seven seems like a good starting number. But you might see something, hey, we missed somebody on an opportunity.
Just to ensure that there is some sort of pliability because there's a lot of folks that feel that they're not going to be heard and or have past history for whatever reason. So if there is a need to add one or two more, it will hopefully happen so that people are all represented, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And then may I recommend that, could the board recommend specific individuals to this task force? Or which you prefer staff to take a shot at it and present it before the board?
Ms. Grant?
Normally your board takes applications for the task force. Your board comes up with categories that you feel are germane to the issues at hand. Sometimes numbers, if you only have a couple of categories, you've done it many different ways. But then applications go out and then your board makes the final decision. Your board may also, when this comes back, want to consider about Zoom to ensure because these meetings would be public meetings so that the public will have a chance every time the task force meets to offer comments on their progress, et cetera.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So with that, I'll open public comment. If there's anyone in the room that'd like to come up to the microphone and talk about this agenda item, please come up and state your name for the record and your three minutes will commence from that point. Come on up.
I have a property up on Sigler Springs and my property line is...
What's her name?
My name is Sheila Henry, sorry about that. Is about 700 feet lining a very, very large permitted, which I could not make any comment to because I was only given three minutes in two years. And the issue is this, I am now losing all my oak trees. I have a lot of oak tree, I have six acres. And I will videotape it because right now I am losing every single oak tree on my property. It's not due to the drought. I've been there 22 years. And only since the cultivation of the marijuana and the amount of water that is being used have my oak trees died. They're dying. So what I will do is I will, I have photographed the whole, because I have hundreds, okay? They're all dying on the side of the cultivation. And then when they all die, I will publish what's going on with my property because I'm, they bought every single parcel around me and I just wanted to have a voice and I've been trying to have a voice. There is, if you, with this task force, I wish they would address the ability for the amendments. The property owner has several hundreds of acres that are away from my property, but he said, I'm sorry, I can't do anything because the board said that I have to start the process over again. So they will not go and make an amendment to take what they're cultivating right my whole property line, which is taking away, not only are they removing all the walnut, the walnut trees, more walnut trees, condensing the field, and they are not using the available land that they have that's down the road that's much larger than what's next to me. And his comment was, sorry, can't do it. The board said I cannot make an amendment without starting the process over again. So I'm going to lose in the process of everybody trying to get this going and I'm really, really thankful. I want to tell you I'm very thankful. I'm going to have barren land because my oak trees, if you come on my oak, on my property now, they're not full anymore. They're very barren. You can see right straight, I'm going to lose them all. And I just think that there should be an opportunity to make amendments if they have the capability of moving it that, to save my property. And I'm the only one that's effective, so I'm not really that big of a deal to anybody and nor am I an attorney. I'm just a homeowner that's been here for 20 odd years. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Jennifer Smith with the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. I'm going to reiterate a bunch of what's been said today. We appreciate the time that's gone into this. This is a monumental task. It's one that's been asked for and needed for several years. I especially appreciate the fact that the team and the board recognize that this is just the beginning and that an ad hoc or task force is needed. And the LCCA definitely supports that position and we hope that we have a seat at that table. Some overarching topics that have been discussed and will be discussed is we would like to see more alignment with state law. We would like to see more consistency in the definitions, even from a central point of just referring to the code in the state so that when the state changes their definition, we're automatically updated here. I think that that would be a more seamless process for everybody. The limiting of transferability or the perception that that is limited at this time is a very big concern and I hope it will take the time to dig into that further. The ability and the process for amendments and change is a huge issue, especially as we come through drought and drought mitigation programs or plans and how we want to do, change our farms and make them operate more efficiently, especially in these market conditions. We're going to need a very streamlined process for that and at this point it's very confusing. Acreage caps, I just want to say on the record, acreage caps only hurt the local industry. If there aren't acreage caps across the state, we're only damaging the farmers here and limiting our resources here. Regarding the task force, that was exactly my suggestion and so, and I speak on behalf of our membership and that is exactly what we would like to see happen so that our voices can be heard. But also, you know, we want to talk with traditional ag. We want the Farm Bureau involved, the Sheriff's Department, attorneys, either county council or outside cannabis attorneys. But there's a lot of input and valuable input. There's a lot of resources in this county from people who've worked on ordinances in other jurisdictions. So it looks like that's the direction we're going. We're super happy at the LCCA that that's the direction we're going to take. And I appreciate the time that's gone into this and I appreciate that this is the kickoff to a very long marathon. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Mas, I think when there is a problem and there is a disagreement and a dry well and dying trees, that there should be a complaint process. People feel helpless. Before the valley fire, people at both ends of my road had dry wells. They didn't know what to do, they didn't know who to go to, they didn't know how to get help. And with this vegetation management, you write a complaint to the number that you're supposed to write a complaint about it? You never hear anything back. So there needs to be a complaint process besides this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have code enforcement right here, so do you want to respond to that, Marcus? Or Mary? Sure.
This is Director Darby. I wanted to respond to the complaint process because we just hired a customer complaint representative and she starts May 31st. And we have a streamlined process for all complaints other than cannabis. So that is in place. And in the meantime, if you need to contact me directly, I'll take all calls. And then Marcus.
I would like to add one thing. When it comes to the complaints that we receive, we do not require contact information or a name. We do take anonymous complaints because we'd rather know if there's an issue and assess that issue and determine if there's an immediate health or safety issue. So if a complaint does have a name and a contact information on it, our policies and procedures do dictate that we contact the complainant upon the initial first review of the complaint to get additional information. So if you include your name and information, you will be contacted.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Lance Williams. I wanted to say...
You can move the microphone, that looks awkward.
Lance Williams, I wanted to say thank you very much for the time and input that was put into this new article. And I'm very happy because I've got a lot of phone calls as well that I think that there's a clear path forward here. And I think a task force or an ad hoc committee really can solve a lot of those phone calls that I received. So I feel very confident that this can easily be worked out and I think it's going in the right direction. So I just really wanted to express that. I had other things to express. I don't think I need to say anything really too much more to that. But I would like to also say, I was thinking about that amendment process and that this gentleman here had said that he went to a farm and might need a bathroom. I also know that depending on which planner you have, that planner might say, start over. So I think there has to be a clear process here. And I think that with the right task force, you can really come to those conclusions. I would also ask that, you know, making sure that whoever's on that task force reviews these tapes from 2016 and so they see the process that has happened. So there's been so many different meetings, there's been so much public input. Well, I mean, I want to make sure the cannabis input is there, but I also really want to make sure that we include the public input that has been collected over the time because it's something that really, you know, hits home. So when you do this task force, that, you know, there is a way to make sure that the employees here, because they're so busy, actually can review these tapes. When I was looking through some of the current ordinance that's being suggested, I kind of felt like a lot of people, there were some things, there were some issues there. I don't think they had time to review and kind of have an understanding. So I just really want to say thank you for suggesting the task force. I think it'll be great. And I think we can move forward and who knows how long it'll take, but I think everyone's heart's in the right place. So thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Go ahead.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
In terms of amending the projects and having to start over, a lot of that falls under CEQA and whether or not you're changing the footprint of the project, which would, I mean, if you go so far down in environmental analysis, which is the crux of most of these projects as far as getting them through the processing and permitting procedures. If you change the footprint, that's often what triggers going back and having to start the review over again, sending it out to local agencies for review, tribal review, and then at the state level with CEQA review. So it really, it's not a blanket answer. It's a project by project and we look at what those changes are and what, you know, warrants the next step. But it could be improved, definitely.
Thank you. Ms. and Ms. Grant, well, before she's...
Oh, I just wanted to say that certainly CEQA dictates the level of environmental review and if you expand or change the project, that's going to be a different type of amendment. But the way it's presently drafted, almost everything would be an amendment and that can certainly and easily be corrected.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for LCCA and I want to say thank you Chair Crandall and Board and staff for the discussion here today. This is absolutely a heavy lift and as you can imagine, we have a list that's longer than Bruno's of comments and input and are grateful that a path has been, it sounds like, agreed upon to move forward and create the right vehicle because it's far more than we can hash out in three-minute segments, of course, here and even, you know, in a few workshops. So I think the ongoing task force is brilliant and we look forward to participating. And the one thing I want to speak to is that I think that an area that this ordinance doesn't quite reflect board direction is about the vision for cannabis in Lake County going forward and of building a diversified industry that celebrates all of the different license types, right, at the state level of manufacturing, processing, retail, and then the whole realm of cana tourism that is available. Like how can we really put Lake County on the map for something that has been produced here for a long time? And there are ways in which the zoning and the different license types will actually restrict that as written. So I think we need to look at matching the ordinance with the vision for economic development, economic diversification, and also building new tax revenue streams. Because the future is not just in cultivation alone. As we see with any agricultural crop, we need to be able to offer a wide variety of experiences and services for this industry. So that's an area where we really look forward to aligning additionally with state law. And one of the resources that I think is available in this marathon, as Jen put it, is working directly with DCC. And I had the opportunity to meet with Nicole Elliott recently, who's the Director of the DCC, and they and their staff have resources to work with local government to help streamline ordinances so that they can make sure that we're not, you know, being redundant. And she offered them to Lake County. And with this more time that we have, I think that's going to be a great additional stakeholder to include so that we're removing redundancies and like saving everybody time and also allowing the state to do some of the work too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers?
Board Supervisors, again, as always, nice to see you guys. Thank you so much. Without reiterating things that we've all kind of talked about, you know, one of the things that I really would like to bring forward and it's something that we've all kind of went around today is that what we looked at today as far as an ordinance, while we know it's just a draft, it seems to me that it's a lot further away from where we were trying to be. And while the ad hoc committee will bring us all together and bring the focal points together, I think it's really important to look at what brought us to this point and how the conversation has gone in the past, starting back at 2016, and where we've gotten to now. So I'm really hoping that we can cumulatively, as a group, bring ourselves to somewhere that's actually within the lines of where we're all trying to work from. Without going over all the little details inside of that ordinance that everybody read, you know, the far-reaching effects of even just a few of those aspects would be severely detrimental to our county economically. And so with that, understanding that this ordinance or the writing of these rules has so much importance to our economic development as a group or as a county, every little piece of it has to really be digested and focused appropriately. When we look at a 25... When we look at a 2,500-mile radius, right, for notifications or odor, odor plans that are also going to require further SEQA review, it seems like a lot of those little aspects actually turn into these bigger problems. And focusing on the bigger project, the bigger job of seeing us develop, really has to be the keynote or the key point of that ad hoc committee. When it comes to modifications or amendments, I think that it would be an important thing to think about, that those, what we write in this ordinance directly reflects what the industry will do. So when we look at modifications and looking at ways where people can save water, right, when we think about the drought and the lady over here who was talking about the things that have happened to her because of the use of the water, so on and so forth, allowing people to convert from outdoor to greenhouse, that by itself is a monumental change in the amount of water that you use. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's mind-blowing, okay? It's, it's less than 10%. And I gone, I actually went over this with Mary Darby about agricultural water recycling, water usage, and it all applies not just to cannabis, but agriculture in general, but you can knock down your water usage by 90% or more by simply putting it into a greenhouse. However, if you want to move into that greenhouse because you're outdoor and now, let's say, you want to save and conserve water voluntarily, no requirement, then you have to get a whole new application and start over. And that was my conversation with Andrew. And Andrew, you know, I think everybody wants to work together, right? So we need the framework in which we can work together, otherwise, they're handicapped. Thank you.
Thank you.
He didn't put his name.
Oh, sir, can you, you didn't state your name, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I missed that. We know your name, but we.
For the record, Michael Wagner, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Anybody else in the chambers that would like to come up and speak on this? Because I have some folks on Zoom that are ready. All right. Blair Gu, if you can unmute and we'll start your three minutes. If that's your name, state it for the record. If it's not your name, state what your name is for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Blair Gu. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So first, I wanted to say thank you to the Board for bringing this before everyone today and then also thank you to Director Darby and staff for taking the first draft of the proposed cannabis regulations seriously and kind of coming forward with a great kind of jumping off point. I do agree with Director Darby and it seems like that's the direction that the Board is going to have a task force in place, which I think is fantastic, allowing members of the community, but also members of the industry and perhaps members of the, the county staff to come together and really develop the best path forward for everyone involved. I do have some general suggestions, but my office, Ragway Law Group, will hopefully be able to participate in some of the meetings moving forward, so I'll keep my comments brief. I do want to just initially support kind of the comments made by LCCA representatives. You know, there's a lot that goes into ordinances like this, so not getting everything done on the first kind of go-around is expected, but here are some kind of overarching suggestions that other people have touched upon. So streamlining the proposed ordinance to comply with state law and perhaps streamlining the definitions section specifically to adopt references to state law definitions that will probably cut out a lot of work that needs to be done kind of on the staff level. In particular, making sure that any ordinance that's adopted really differentiates between the definitions of canopy versus property versus premises so that when those words are used throughout the ordinance, it's very clear as to what the ordinance is referring to because I have seen in other jurisdictions, issues with kind of using those words interchangeably, which they do have different definitions, and when they are used interchangeably, it can create problems with compliance with state law. So just pointing that out as something to consider moving forward. And then some kind of other, other overarching goals. So one of the items in the proposed ordinance is a yearly lottery for the seven cultivation licenses that will be available or that would be under the proposed ordinance. And I encourage everyone to kind of rethink this lottery idea. If the county's goal is to get the most qualified, best qualified operators to operate within county jurisdiction, I've seen in past experience of my own that lotteries can sometimes lead to less qualified applicants being granted permits and then also a lot of turnover in terms of management of those entities. So just something to think about there. Also echoing Sarah Bodnar's comments about creating cannabis tourism in Lake County, if that's the goal, as it has been in prior years, just considering removing limits on where retail can be located, if we're going to create more micro-business opportunities, just making sure that kind of the overarching goals that the county has stated in the past and that the cannabis community and other members, just of the community at large, are kind of addressed through new drafts. And then also just.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up, so if you can wrap up.
Yes, my last comment is just to include language about how any proposed new ordinances or to discuss this in working groups will, will impact those that are currently in the process but maybe don't have completed applications with the county or those whose SEQA documents have not gone through the clearinghouse, just discussing how those people will be impacted by any changes. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Phone 707-295-7257, if you can unmute, we'll give you three minutes. Star six, there you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is Bart Levinson. I'm concerned that right away, you're limiting the discussion by limiting access via Zoom to the meetings that are supposed to be Brown Act compliant to both the public and to those with disabilities. What accommodation is being made for people with disabilities to have access to these meetings?
Yes, Mary, if you would like to. I'm just going to let her come up and.
And elected officials aren't.
Yes, we are filming the actual workshops and they will be broadcasted and they'll be, they will be uploaded into our website as well as made available for public access.
Thank you, Mary. And then I think you stated, Ms. Grant, did you have something to state on that?
I was just going to say that the task force will be Brown Act compliant and will be by Zoom. Your Board's creating the task force and a Board-created committee should always be Brown Act compliant unless it's a very limited ad hoc grouping.
All right. And then I think we have one last person, Patty Lanier, if you can unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to echo a lot of what was said today, especially giving appreciation to the Board and to the Community Development Department and to the community members who come forward to, you know, kind of share what they're experiencing at large, engaging with the cannabis community. I want to just express that as a small operator, what I was told yesterday by Patrick in a meeting on the equity grant was that I'm probably the smallest farm in Lake County that's licensed as an operator. And my initial thinking going into this situation was that I was going to be a mom-and-pop shop as a micro-business operator. And I've been essentially zoned out of being able to do that. And I just want for small farms like myself, our voices to be heard in these meetings. And so I just, I appreciate being invited to the table. So thank you so, so much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lanier. Andrew, you were going to state something right before she came.
Oh, I was just going to comment on the, on the workshops. My understanding is that it, it's going to be kind of set up at different booths for different topics, so it's going to be kind of a flowing conversation, which would be really hard to, I guess, accommodate for a Zoom, you know, having people attend virtually, so.
Those are for the workshops this week. And so just, just so everyone knows, the workshops this week are going to be conducted by Community Development and they're going to be, these aren't necessarily Brown Act compliant because there's people are coming, discussing it. And then, when we come next week on, in June 7th or the next meeting we have, that's when we'll put together the ad hoc group or the task force that will be Brown Act compliant. And I know for sure, for me, you know, I want to ensure that there is a balanced group. I'm not going to try to appoint, for me, I'm not going to try, and I know that the Board's pretty good about this, too. We're not going to try to appoint just specific, we want to make sure every, everybody has a say and people are at the table, so.
Ms. Grant?
I would just state in addition to what you've already clarified, that the, these workshops by Community Development, these initial two may not be by Zoom, but I'm sure the Department's going to make adjustments to ensure that people can be remote or who have difficulty gaining access can readily speak up during these meetings and the meetings can be configured in such a way that will make Zoom effective.
All right.
Yeah, I think we got that in the presentation, the August meetings, the next workshops did have Zoom in there, so, yes.
And we got a thumbs up from the back room, so that seems like a big yes.
So with that, I'll go ahead and close public input as I've got the Zoom. And I think from here, is there anything else we need to do in order to move forward with this or do we have a clear understanding of where we need to go from here? All right. With that, it looks like we'll close item 6.1, I want to say it right, 6.5.